Hey Kyle. We ready? Welcome to the virtual Riodell City Council meeting. We're reporting back, nothing to report out from closed session. Roll call please.
I didn't hear that, but I think it was me here.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Oh no, that was me, sorry, here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Woodall?
Here.
City Manager Knob?
Here.
Chief of Police Connor?
There.
Finance Director Dillingham?
Here.
Community Development Director Caldwell?
Here.
Water Superintendent Jensen?
Here.
Waste Water Superintendent Taylor?
Here.
And City Clerk Dunham is present, thank you.
Thank you. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council and on matters on which, on which are not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council action not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Are there any hands raised or emails?
For currently no hand raised.
And I received no emails on non-agenda items.
Thank you, I'm gonna give a second for any hands to raise that need to raise. Thank you for putting that up. Well, we will now close public presentations. We'll move to the consent calendar, is there any council member who would like to remove anything, an item from the consent calendar?
I'd like to remove item two.
Okay. If there are no other, there are no public, no hands raised, no emails about removing anything from the consent calendar, then I will ask for a motion to approve item number one.
Don't move by Johnson.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second by Carter.
We have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes, motion carries five zero. Councilmember Woodall, item two.
Yes, I'm wondering, Kyle, I'm sorry, I should have asked you just when I was in today, but I didn't. So, I'm wondering, are we just extending the exceptions to the Brown Act while we're zooming? Or are we also extending the date to the January 1st, 2024? And I'm asking because I thought the mayor had purview to say whether we needed to meet in Zoom or whether we could resume meetings in person. And I was wondering if, if we, if in the Humboldt County they reduce it back to no maximum exceptions, would we be able to resume before that date?
I am going to turn this over to City Clerk Dunham.
Sure. Yeah, basically what AB 361 does is extends the exceptions to the Brown Act's teleconferencing requirements to the January 2024, and it has to be during a declared state of emergency and when the state or local health officials have imposed or recommended measures to promote social distancing. So there are, they extended it with some exemptions to the Brown Act, basically to say that the city doesn't have to provide physical location for each of the council members where they are meeting remotely. Otherwise, we would have to post agendas at your house under the Brown Act. And we can't require public comments to be submitted in advance of the meeting, although the council can have that as an option. So people can submit them in advance, but we can't require it. And if the state of emergency remains active for more than 30 days, then the council must make certain findings by majority vote of the council to continue using the bill's exemptions to the Brown Act teleconferencing rules. And the findings they have to make are, the council, is that the council has reconsidered the circumstances and determined that the state of emergency continues to directly impact the ability of members to meet safely in person or the state or the local officials continue to impose or recommend social distancing measures. So as such, the, provided the emergency still exists, the matter will come back to the council at the November 2nd meeting for further consideration. But, so it's, and it doesn't say if the local officials impose it, impose or recommend social distancing. So the council, council has to make that finding every 30 days that the, the emergency still exists and they don't feel it's safe to meet live. So does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. And, um, yes, I'm satisfied.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions regarding item two? Hearing none, are there any hands raised or emails come in?
There are still no hands raised at this moment.
And there are no emails.
Thank you. Then is there a motion to accept item, to approve item number two on the consent calendar?
Don't move, Woodall.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Johnson.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes, motion carries five zero. We will now move on to the City Manager Staff Updates, page 27 in your packets. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garance and members of the council. So during the week of October 11th, we'll be conducting a survey in the downtown area and other sidewalk areas throughout town to identify deficiencies related to the Americans with Disabilities Act and other repairs that are needed to various sidewalks throughout town. So the project will be funded through our risk provider, the Small Cities Organized Risk Effort, and will provide some information both to staff and the council in terms of existing sidewalks and needed repairs that need to be made. We do also have a street sweeping scheduled for October 15th, so I want to encourage everybody to not park on Wildwood Avenue, particularly the morning of, of the 15th. And, and that would be on David Street and Wildwood Avenues primarily. But they'll also be probably getting down Bellevue and Rigby and some of the other kind of larger streets in town. With that, we have also been meeting with our prospective contractors for the solar project here at City Hall. So I was pleased to see that we had multiple vendors interested in the project, which is, I think, good news. And, and I think with that, unless there are any questions, I'm happy to turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you. Um, about the sidewalk assessment survey, do you need help with that or can I go?
So I, so it's all going to be conducted by a third-party firm who is, this is what they do. It's precision concrete cutting. So there's already, they're doing, performing some work elsewhere up in Humboldt County. And so the opportunity presented itself for them to come up and, and perform the work. So I don't know exactly when, but I'm happy to let you know. And, and folks will see, some, some folks in vests and hard hats probably wandering around town with a tape measuring level and photographing various sidewalks throughout town, so.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Kyle, I understand that you've contacted the schools to talk about our schools dash city agreement. Is there any movement on that?
Yeah, so it's with the school district. I did follow up today with an additional email and they are working on identifying a time, then they'll get back to us and we'll try to arrange it with the ad hoc committee.
That's my only question.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodall?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson?
Just a question on the Todd property, is there something going on with that? That we're, or are we just clarifying what its appraisal value is?
Right now, what we're doing is seeking a, an appraisal of, of the property with the permission of the property owner. The council had identified in the economic development plan and strategy for the community to continue to investigate options related to the Todd property, one of the larger undeveloped properties in town and also adjacent to US 101. So that process has taken quite a while to get where we're at, but I believe there is an actual appraisal scheduled to be conducted next week. And then we'll probably need another two weeks to get the results.
I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any hands raised or emails?
I see no emails.
Thank you. No hands raised. And, oh, I had one question, I just wonder what SCADA stood for under the Public Works?
Is Randy on the line? Randy can explain it.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Oh, what SCADA stands for? You worked on it.
Uh, SCADA, I have to look that up again. It's basically...
Oh, it's not that important, I just wondered.
It's basically a telemetry system that reads the pump cycles and telemetry for the water tanks and things like that.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. You don't need to find out the literal, I just was having a moment.
Mayor Garance?
Yes.
SCADA stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition.
Acquisition, yep.
Awesome, showing off, okay. That's cool. Thanks, Rick. Okay, then we will move on now to unmet transit needs public hearing. City Manager.
All right, and I will also turn this one over to our City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. So this is our annual public hearing on unmet transit needs that most of you are familiar with. Each year, HCOG is required to conduct the citizen participation process to identify any unmet transit needs within the county. The process is required prior to allocation of TDA funding the following fiscal year. All comments deemed to meet the definition of an unmet transit need will then be analyzed to determine if the need is reasonable to meet. In addition to the county's unmet transit hearing, HCOG recommends each entity conduct a separate public hearing to receive comments specific to their jurisdiction. TDA funds must be allocated first to unmet transit needs, which are found to be reasonable to meet within a jurisdiction, before any remaining funds can be allocated for non-transit purposes, such as bicycle and pedestrian facilities or streets and roads. Stevie Luther from HCOG is present to answer any questions regarding the process. With that, I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk, and welcome, Steve Luther. We were just wondering if you would like to say a few words? Thank you for being here.
How are you doing, good evening? I am the Associate Regional Planner at HCOG and I'm the liaison to the SS TAC, the Social Services Transportation Advisory Council. And we conduct, conduct this process annually to hear from the public what their unmet transit needs are and the very specific definition. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear...
So I think you're, you're in and out there, Steve.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I'll turn it back to you to hear from the public, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, I will come to counsel first and see if there are any questions. Mayor Pro Tim?
No questions, Mayor Garance.
Councilmember Woodall?
No questions.
Councilmember Wilson?
No question.
Councilmember Carter?
No questions.
All right. Now, are there any, and I have no questions, are there any hands raised or emails?
No hands raised at the moment.
No emails.
Okay, we'll give it a minute since it's a, you know, public hearing. So, yes, we'll give, we'll give it a minute for people to dial in. Okay, well, I think that's probably sufficient time, I think, to allow someone to have called in or zoomed in. So, hearing none, no, having no input, I guess, we just, do we close the public hearing? Okay, then we will close the public hearing and we will thank you, Steve Luther, for coming and taking time out of your evening to make yourself available to us. Thank you very much. And now, we will move on to Senate Bill 307 related to rail rights away north of Willets along the old North Coast Rail Authority Line. City Manager. And that's page 37 in your packets.
Thank you, Mayor Garance and members of the council. So, back at our September 21st council meeting, it was requested by Councilmember Wilson and agreed to by the council that an item be placed on the agenda for discussion related to Senate Bill 307. That's a bill submitted by Senator McGuire that aims to prevent activities on the North Coast Rail Authority Line for train service. So as the council is well aware of, there were many decades of attempts to restart freight service on the 300-mile stretch of Northwestern Pacific Railroad, which at one point ran from Marin County up to Eureka. And State Senator McGuire, back in February of 2018, introduced the Great Redwood Trails Act, Senate Bill 1029, which is a bill to convert the publicly-owned line into a destination for bikers and hikers. So in more recent history, in August 16th, 2021, filing, a filing before the Service Transportation Board by a newly-formed corporation called North Coast Railroad Company, LLC, objected to the efforts to move the Great Redwood Trail forward and alleged that they intend to rebuild the dormant rail line. From some reporting, it appears that it is potentially coal interests from the Powder River Basin region of Wyoming that are interested in this activity. And so the suspected use for this transportation rehabilitation of the rail line is potentially involved with moving coal to the port of Humboldt for export to East Asia. So, again, SB 307 seeks to make alterations in state law to prevent that from occurring. And then I would just also advise the council that today at the Board of Supervisors meeting, the board unanimously passed a resolution entitled Declaration of the County's Opposition to Potential Coal Export Through Humboldt County and Reaffirming Support for the Great Redwood Trail. So with that, there wasn't a whole lot of, you know, information to be gathered on this particular topic other than news media reports, which staff did attach to the agenda. And so with that, staff will hand it back to the mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. I'll open it up for questions from the council. Councilmember Woodall?
Yeah, my question is, I think I read where if, if they did put a rail line in, that it wouldn't just be for coal, it could be for other uses too. I mean, it would be open use? That's part of the question.
So again, it's hard for me to answer, answer that. In, in theory, yes, it could be used for multiple purposes.
Okay, and, and it seems like to me that we've been trying, I know we've been trying to get a rail line in to Humboldt. I mean, I know we've been trying to go over to Reading, looking at that possibility. So, okay, that answers my question, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, thank you, thank you staff for clarifying with the county made a, made a declaration on this trail. They, I think it's come to a point where the south, south-north line, whether it was for coal or for anything, was, it was never a good idea in the first place because of the terrain. And just from some of the pictures that it shows, that it's, the cost would be beyond comprehension what it would cost to rehabilitate it. And there's, I can't see there ever being a support for it. There's possibly, I can see the north or the east-west, but that seems to have lost any momentum. But mainly the, the bill that we're talking about and that we're talking about 307 is specifically calling out that state government or state funds cannot be used to, as a part of this, if it relates to the coal. If it were to be, if I understood it right, if it were to be, be used for something else, then it wouldn't, the, the funds could be there. But it's specifically targeting the idea that coal would come through the county. And that, I believe, would be a bad idea. So, again, thank you for allowing us to be on the, up for discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Um, I mean, no questions per se, but I think that rail line is probably not a great idea for trains and definitely not for coal. So, I guess I would agree with the County Board of Supervisors on that one. And that's it, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. I, I fully support Senate Bill 307. I think it's the right direction for the state of California to go. And as far as a rail line north-south along the existing alignment, you know, an estimate of 2.4 billion or something number like that is absolutely monstrous. And probably, it's even much more than that, the environmental damage to open up that line would be potentially huge. And the timeline required to do it would be monstrous. So, there's my position, thank you.
Thank you. And I too support SB 307. I think it might make the last chance grade look like a piece of cakewalk to fix trying to get this set up and running. So, thank you, Councilmember Wilson, for bringing that to our attention. It was something that we needed to address and I would, I'm, I'm I'm really hoping that we will support this bill. It, as a letter, in a letter form. Are there any hands raised or emails?
No hands raised at the moment.
And no emails.
And, oh, I'm sorry.
Possible suggested motion would be to, in order to just expedite the process, a proposed motion could be to have staff draft a letter in support of SB 307 and authorize the mayor to go ahead and execute, approve of and execute said letter.
Thank you, and can I make the motion by saying what you said? What he said?
Don't move, yes.
Johnson seconded that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. A roll call please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes, motion carries five zero. Thank you. Now we will move on to the appointment, nope, the review of the five-year street planned authorized and authorized city manager to execute agreements with GHD and WIT Church Engineering for 2022 street projects, totaling $87,000. Page 51 in your packets.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. As you, as you may recall, the council back in 2020 identified the priority of establishing a five-year streets plan to address many, but not necessarily all, of the streets in, in Riodell and target approximately $450,000 in annual expenditures. So in looking at the condition of various streets and the need to prioritize that work, the council identified prioritizing streets that do not, that we do not anticipate having to dig up for water line replacements or sewer work or other similar type activities. So there's lots of streets where that is the case, where we do not need to perform that work. But there are many other streets throughout town that need underground work, whether that's drainage, water, or sewer. So essentially, what we have been doing over the past couple of years is, for a better word, picking off some of the low-hanging fruit and targeting the streets where the city is not anticipating needing to, you know, trench the street and, and, and dig it up. So, so all of the streets that we've been working on, to the best of our knowledge, we don't need to be digging up anytime in the near future unless there's some sort of emergency situation that needs to be addressed underneath those streets. So, so there's certainly a long ways to go to accomplish this five-year plan. And then there's more to do after that five-year plan that is contingent on the work that we need to do related to water infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure, and drainage. So this particular year, this past summer, we saw the city's largest self-funded pavement project that the city's ever done. Traditionally, the major projects that the city has undertaken have all relied on grant funding. Whether that's, for example, our ATP project or various projects on Wildwood Avenue to rehab that over the past 12 or so years, including some of the residential streets in town. So the city's in a position now financially where it can make these investments into some of the deferred maintenance. And again, this year saw an expenditure of about 450 to $500,000 in total street work, primarily on Aloha, but also on Ogle, Spring, Summer, Butcher, and Dixie Streets. So that, that work went over very well. We ended up with an excellent contractor working on that, who, who was able to get the work accomplished for this year. So now, looking towards the summer of 2022, we're coming back to take a look at our five-year plan, the assumptions that were made in that, and where we want to go from here. So this is basically planning time for our next maintenance, street maintenance projects. And so in the, in the list, we have proposed, on page 53, you'll see this is just a summary graph of the work to be performed and a short status update in terms of where they're at. Some of the work that we had anticipated doing in 2021 did not, you know, get accomplished. So the, kind of the two big ones that stand out in my mind was really getting a better handle on the drainage and situation on Blue Slide and Upper Monument. And then also the US 101 interface in Northwestern Avenue. So, so those projects were intended to be done this year, but we ended up having to focus then on our pavement project. So for 2022, and you'll notice on the right side, I've highlighted the, the projects that we're proposing to work on for 2022. So I'll start at the top and just, you know, state that what we would be doing is, again, taking a look at Blue Slide, in particular, one of, you know, the major streets that we have some concerns about, getting some preliminary estimates and, and suggestions on how maybe some preventative maintenance might help prevent slip out on that particular stretch of road. Moving down the list to the next highlighted section would be DI upgrades on Edwards Avenue, which right now are potential threat to bicyclists and need to be replaced. We're also planning on and participating in the regional countywide slurry seal project. So that typically involves partners like the County of Humboldt, City of Fortuna, Arcata, and others who participate in that slurry seal project. We've gotten a lot of really good preventative maintenance done for relatively low cost to the city, participating in those programs. And they're able to cover a fairly large amount of street surface area and ultimately save money in the long run because you're buying essentially additional life out of, out of a roadway surface. We would also be, and this is, you know, important, is, again, I explained that some of our streets we're not able to get to because of the underground infrastructure related to it. So Ogle Avenue, for example, on the north end, has multiple issues, including identified water line replacement project that needs to occur there. And then obviously, to anybody who lives there, there's a very significant drainage issue that has existed for many, many years, decades in that particular neighborhood. And so it doesn't make any sense to repave a road and even potentially heighten the road without first addressing the drainage issues. So this proposal for next year seeks to address the drainage issues on, on Ogle Street, getting it a further step closer to finally being able to provide that nice, smooth pavement service, surface that everybody wants. Drainage plan prep for Miller to Prairie. So that's Riverside Avenue and basically design plans for how we're going to move that particular pavement project forward. The program also includes funding to implement the, the actual repaving and re-rating of the road. In addition to that, what is proposed for 2022 is the Cherry and Orchard Loop for a grind and repave on that particular section as well. And then part of the proposal again is the US 101 Northwestern Interface, not for construction work, but for us to start to develop plans for what we would be doing in subsequent years. As the council knows, there are some issues with the interface with Highway 101 that need to be addressed. And there's responsibility on the city's part to also work on those plans. But we feel pretty confident that Caltrans will be a good partner in terms of, of helping us to solve that particular problem for the long term. So that's the basics of, of the plan identified at the moment. In order to accomplish this, staff is going to need the assistance of some engineers. So in this case, we have a scope that is attached from GHD Engineering to help us move these projects forward. The, and the scope tops out a little over $36,000. And then following that, we decided to engage Wit church engineering. Some of the council members may recall, back in 2015, Wit church engineering under a CDPG grant came in and did some of the latest analysis of the drainage situation out on Ogle Bellevue. And so they seem like the most logical partners since they were the last to touch that particular project. So we have re-engaged Wit church engineering for a potential cost of up to $51,000. That's a, you know, that particular project involves interfacing with a lot of private property. So it's a little bit more of a touchy area that we want to make sure that, that it's absolutely, you know, correct and ready for, for construction prior to putting out any bids. So with that, the, again, the highlights on page 53 are the plans so far. This is really just the initial step for us to start working on it. As we get closer to project fruition, we'll get better cost estimates. And obviously, the council can, if we're going to be over exceeding budget, we can cut back on the projects. But this is definitely a time to add more if the council would like, like to do so. And then I'll just quickly, I'll just run over just quickly what we have accomplished so far on the five-year plan, which includes repairs to Miller Court, the overlay on Dixie, maintenance paves on River Oval Spring Loop. We have also done maintenance paves on Aloha. Some work on Blue Slide and, and then there's, there's, you know, further work that needs to be completed. So far, nothing's happened on Northwestern Avenue. What else did we complete? Butcher, Riedel, Painter Streets. And so, you know, that's, again, that was our largest city-funded expenditure on, on street projects. And we're looking potentially at the, the end of this, at the end of this year, when we tally all the numbers together, the probable cost of our project is right around $465,000 for this year, for this summer's construction season. And for next year, just the preliminary estimates for the cost associated with the projects we're proposing for 2022 are going to be somewhere north of $700,000. So, so we're following up this year with another record-setting expenditure in terms of investing in roads, which again, the council's identified as one of its highest priorities. So with that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions that the council has and turn it back to Mayor Garance.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you for, that was very clarifying. I mean, it was pretty clear anyway, but I appreciate everything you said and the points you made about how we're doing, how the plan's being addressed and which streets we're doing and why we aren't doing others. So I appreciate that. I will start with Councilmember Wilson.
Yes, very, very good update. We, City Manager and I talked about a little bit about this earlier this week. And I think it's a good plan. I'm glad that we're looking at upper on Blue Slide in particular and Monument. But all, Blue Slide concerns me, and I'm glad we're doing a study there. Because if we were to, you know, if that were to slip out, that would
Be bad.
That would be damaging for both. I think, I think the county would have to get involved because it would, it would surely impact the county. But it's, anyway. I, I think, I think it's a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you. No questions, but you know, when I tell people I live in Riedel, they say, "It's looking so nice." And they always compliment the street improvements. So thank you, city staff, for making it possible. That's it.
All right. Awesome. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Some nine years ago, I got on city council with the desire to see water, streets, and sewer well-funded. And, you know, we've come a long ways in that nine-year period. And I'm really pleased with the actions that the city has taken on their street program. And this proposal represents a 67% increase over what we designated. And certainly, the word robust hardly does justice to what we're proposing. I think it's a marvelous plan. I have one question for Kyle, and we discussed it briefly yesterday. But on page 59 of our packet, the third page of the Wit church agreement, item number 10, states that all documents created by the consultant that is Wit church shall remain the property of the consultant. And normally, the working papers of a consultant remain his. They can be proprietary in part or in whole. But all documents wouldn't necessarily include plans and specifications, which normally are transmitted in paper form and electronically to the owner, that is, the City of Riedel. And did you receive any clarification on that, City Manager?
Yeah, so I think it's, it's just the last part of the sentence was cut off. It should say until accepted by the, by the client. So, so basically, all the, all the documents remain theirs until accepted by the, by the city. So that's a pretty standard language item, and, and that will be corrected before anything's signed.
Okay. Lower the comments. Thank you, Mayor Garance.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Councilmember Woodall?
Yeah, I have one question. It says the avenues various for slurry seals. Have we identified which avenues? I assume we're talking about first, second, and third. Have we identified which ones that we might use that work on?
So we have not yet. So that will be an item coming to the council at some point in the, in the future, where we will identify the proposed slurry seal work. Right now, it's really very preliminary in, in identifying which, who's going to participate in the regional seal and roughly how much money the entities have so that the organizers know exactly, you know, roughly what bid amount, total bid amount we're working on. But we are looking at that. There are probably, I, both Randy and I have been trying to get around to doing a smaller patch repair project to prepare for the slurry seal. There are some sections we want to do in the avenues to prep it for slurry seal. But the way, the disruption caused by slurry seal, even though it's relatively short amount of, of pain, we would ultimately probably seal most of the roads over, over two different cycles. That way, we allow people to, you know, park in alternate streets and whatnot nearby, as opposed to just trying to slurry seal the entire avenues all at once. It would just probably create a unnecessary amount of, you know, confusion. So, so we are working on identifying those, those particular street sites, and we'll be returning to the council at some point in the near future.
Thank you. One other question is on Riverside. We have that. We're going to patch and slurry Riverside North. And I noticed on, on Riverside, on Miller to Eagle, they're doing drainage plan prep. Do, I'm assuming Venus, we're going to slurry Riverside North. We don't have drainage problems?
So I, I, I don't believe they're as, as, as severe as, as the southern end of Riverside. Riverside North is, is one that we are going to be looking at over the next couple of years to identify exactly what needs to be done there. I think it was hoped that, that somehow we could, you know, slurry seal it or chip seal it for a relatively low cost. But we still haven't really gotten to the point where we're really definitive on exactly what needs to, needs to happen out there. So, but that is on our radar to do in upcoming cycles.
Okay. I want to thank you. This all looks great, and I'm excited because it makes our town look so much better. And as Amanda said, people are noticing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodall. So City, and I have no questions. I appreciate the work you guys have put into this. It's so exciting. I mean, I'm really so excited about the whole thing and, and so happy that it's happening. So that's, that's my comment. It's just, thank you. And are there any hands raised or emails?
No hands raised. And there are no emails.
Thank you. And so do you want a motion on the, the engineering agreements, City Manager?
Yes, I need the city council to authorize the city manager to execute agreements with GHD and Wit church engineering for our 2022 street projects.
So is there a motion to authorize the city manager to execute agreements with GHD and Wit church engineering for 2022 street projects totaling 87,000?
Don't move by Johnson.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second by Carter.
We have a motion and a second. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Now we will move to the appointment of Now we will move to the appointment of two members of the City Council to an ad hoc committee related to the development of a facade improvement program. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. So another hopefully fun project coming up. Again, as part of the council's economic development action plan, the council called for the development of a facade improvement plan as one of the top priorities. So we have been discussing and learning a lot about the implementation of a facade improvement program that could work in the city of Riau Dell. So we've been working with City Attorney and Kevin Caldwell, myself, to identify kind of the best path forward. And we want to be able to work with an ad hoc of the City Council, so two council members to kind of go over some of the ideas, incorporate the input from the council members, and then basically essentially prepare an action item to return to the council with strategy and maybe some of the early parts of the implementation. So I think that, you know, just a reminder that the council, a couple of years ago, set aside approximately $300,000 in an economic development fund in order to fund these types of projects. So even if just a few facades were improved in downtown, I think everybody recognizes that would be a great and recognized improvement. You know, and it really ties into some of the public benefits, which are you know, removal of lights and the connection between light and crime. The, and the need for really revitalization of the downtown Wildwood Core in the commercial core of the city. So essentially, you know, the proposal would be to focus in on commercial properties in the city of Riau Dell. So at least in the initial, at least in the initial rounds. So with that, we're just looking for two members to meet with staff and and learn as we're learning and help us formulate a proposal for the full council's consideration.
Thank you, City Manager. I will reach out to the council. I will say, though, that Councilmember Woodall reached out to me earlier. So she got first dibs. So, but we need another council member who wants to be on the facade ad hoc committee. I'm willing to do it, but if someone, I don't want to take, you know, I'm happy to for anyone.
Of course, I'm going to volunteer. I really like the ad hoc stuff. But if somebody else really wants to do it, that's fine, too. I don't want to take all the fun stuff away.
Well, Councilmember Wilson, Council, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, anything?
Go ahead, Frank.
I said, I'm good with the two that have volunteered.
Okay.
Get over it.
Okay, so Amanda will flip a coin. You want to win? If you really want to win, you can win.
Yeah, I'll win. I win.
Okay. All right. Then Councilmembers Woodall and Councilmember Carter, Councilmembers Woodall and Carter, will be the ad hoc committee of the City Council related to the development of the facade improvement program. Well, I don't know. Is that a raised hand? Kind of a, I guess, everything's supposed to be put to the public, right? So I would, so I have to hold on for a moment and ask if there are any raised hands or emails.
No raised hands.
And no emails.
Thank you. I don't really think we need to wait on this one. I think it's, everyone would be good with those two. So thank you very much. Now we will move on to the discussion on crossing guard sentry box located on the corner of Wildwood and Center. Page 61 in our packets.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. Another fun one, I hope. So just, you know, as we're engaging in all these efforts to beautify Riau Dell, remove light, it's been, you know, identified as one of the council's top priorities. We are our police department now has a full-time CSO working on nuisance and light issues throughout the community. And one that has been identified is the, there is a small red sentry box, crossing guard sentry box. And I had to look it up to find its appropriate name, but sentry box is apparently the appropriate name. And that is on the corner of Center and Wildwood. And so that that box used to be used by the crossing guard in inclement weather to, you know, shelter and wait for for the need to flag and stop traffic for kids going to school. So the sentry boxes has not been utilized for many, many years because of the installation of the electronic crossing guard that essentially crossers of the, of that highly trafficked area. You know, push a button and the, and the road lights up to help advise people that there are folks crossing the road and that they need to stop. So the ownership of the box is not particularly clear. There's nothing in writing or you know, specifically identifying that that any one group is responsible for the, for the repair of the box. Certainly, some people will say anecdotally, it's, you know, one public entity, and others will say it's another. But ultimately, it is a city responsibility on the, on the right of way. So staff is proposing, just to see it either repaired. I think for a relatively affordable amount of money, we can probably have a handyman or some sort of contractor go in there and simply replace a couple of pieces of missing siding and then repaint it. But I also want to see if the council would like to see the box removed in its entirety. So we're really just looking for council direction on this, on this particular issue. But with the efforts related to beautification, we just don't want to see this particular property, this particular facility continue to kind of degrade you know, right next to the gateway. So with that, I will return it to the council and seek your direction.
Thank you, City Manager. Is I am mute? Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. You know, if the the box has not been used since the city installed the blinkers, lights on the street, why, I see no need to have it there. And it's become really redundant and unneeded and as such unused, unwanted, remove it, and get on to the next subject. Thank you.
That was very clear. Councilmember Woodall?
Well, I'm, I find it kind of cute. It's a place for people to sit down when they're walking. If it was fixed up, that's fine. But I'm also can go with taking it down. So it's just what the rest of the council wants.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, it makes, it makes sense to take it out of there. I understand what the Councilmember Woodall is saying. It's a nice stopping place, maybe if it's raining, but just to have the added cost of keeping it maintained for really nothing. I won't say nothing, but it just seems like an unavoidable cost that we could do without it. I'm okay with getting rid of them.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter?
Thank you. I mean, it's cute, like Julie said, kind of. But if it's just a place where people are peeing, we don't need that. So that's what I think.
Okay, well, I didn't know that's what people were doing there.
I don't know. It just seems like a place that that would happen.
They could be. Well, I had a suggestion given to me of a library, like a free library, like you see around neighborhoods. If you wanted to, you know, redo it and make it quaint and something like along those lines. I can see where we're leaning, but I was just putting that out there as a suggestion because it is nice when you go through neighborhoods and they have just little, you just take books and switch out books and it's a nice thing. So I was just putting that there. And
That did cross my mind.
Yeah.
I did think, though, if it were something else, and I thought of, yeah.
Yeah, I would have to put a door on it, but then that's, you know, adding, so I don't know. But are there any hands raised or emails?
No hands raised.
I do have one email.
Would you read it, please?
Yes. "We wanted to make sure the public record for this agenda item included the history of why that crossing guard sentry box was installed at that location without a proper foundation and clear ownership. Around 2004, we were forced to fight the city and Redwood Community Action Agency over their administration of the CDBG First Time Homebuyers Program after we had bought a fixer-upper in Riau Dell. The series of events and the battle over trying to get the foundation to the house and structure beams repaired is well documented at our website, riautlntimes.com. During the dispute, RCAAs project manager Larry Miller, their designated contractor Joe Bucola, the city, and their building inspector Arnie Kemp were attempting to force cosmetic-only repairs to our house despite extensive known structural failures. As part of that cosmetic work, they purchased a supply of hardy plank siding with the intent of covering the original redwood chiplap siding on our house, one of the few nice features of the house at that time. We resisted, and the hardy plank was returned. That hardy plank was then used to build the crossing guard sentry box, not as a safety feature for the crossing guard, but as a city-sanctioned screw-you-to-our-family and anyone else complaining about misappropriation of funds. Then building inspector Arnie Kemp and others constructed the shelter, apparently without a proper concrete foundation, which is ironic considering the fact that Mr. Kemp ignored the failing foundation and structure beams on our home in the first place. The ownership of the shelter is in question, according to the agenda item, because at that time, those connected with City Hall didn't need to bother with things like ownership or permits. The good old boys ran the city and did whatever they liked without fear of any repercussions. A few things have changed for better since then, thankfully. It is important to recognize the history and record it for future generations in order to learn from the past. The shelter was never designed and built as a safety feature for a crossing guard, and it should be removed entirely at this point. Perhaps the people that put it in there in the first place without ownership or permits should be asked to contribute to the cost of repair or removal. Thank you, Steve and Sharon Wolf."
Thank you. So is there a motion to save or move the the, is there a motion to remove the crossing guard?
Deborah, can I ask a quick question?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
So I, I kind of like your idea of a library box. Would that be something we could look at? Or do we want to tear it down? So I just wanted to throw that out.
Okay, well, thank you. And I mean, I don't see why we couldn't look at it. I don't know if we can move it somewhere others than that corner, since that seems, you know, if it would be better placed somewhere else, or if that would be able to stay there, we could look into it, but I would have to ask consensus of the board, do we want to look into that library feature?
Yeah, of course you have to ask. I just wondered if anybody else.
Well, I would be for it. Amanda, I think she's, just looking, you know, just looking at it and seeing and actually coming back relatively quickly with some kind of answer of what we found as we looked at it, maybe the beautification committee can look at it.
That would be a good idea. I like that idea.
Awesome. Okay, well, thank you. Is, so is that a consensus, gentlemen? What do you, what do you say? Are you are you willing to give us a chance to look at it? Thank you. Okay, so.
Mayor Garance, I would have a comment that the Community Service District in Scotia, right adjacent to their office, has a small free library. And on it, they've got a little plaque stating that, you know, they're part of a group or association. And as part of the review, I would suggest that staff or ad hoc committee go over there and take a look at that and maybe even contact that organization about the, you know, the free library book exchange idea.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you for that information.
So Deborah, are we going to refer it to ad hoc committee?
I believe that's what the consensus is. And then we will go and look at the Scotia Library. Thank you, everyone. Now we will move on to, wait, did I do a motion? I don't think, was, did I need to do a motion?
I think the best, yeah, let's put that into, into a motion to refer the item to the beautification committee.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to refer the sentry box located on the corner of Wildwood and Center to the beautification committee? We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, Carter.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Now we'll move on to the discussion on the city's horse regulations, page 62 in the packet. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. And I will actually turn this over to Kevin, who was kind enough to write this one up, if he's still on the line.
I am still on the line. Mayor Garance, members of the council, the mayor, this does start on page 62 of your packet. At your last meeting, the council requested staff look into horse regulations related to horses being on streets. Chapter six of our municipal code does include some regulations, and they are actually regarding horses. They're actually on page 63 of your packet. And if you look at the top of the page, it basically says, horses, no person shall drive, ride, lead, or tie an animal on any sidewalk or allow any animal attached to any vehicle to stand across or on any crossing of any street or sidewalk, or allow any animal to stand upon a public street or alley without being securely tied or under the control of its owner or manager, or stake out any animal in the public streets or parks for the purpose of allowing the animal to graze or any other purpose. So we do have some horse regulations. Basically, they are not allowed on sidewalks. They are allowed to traverse the city roads. The one issue that is not discussed is the horse droppings themselves. We do have regulations regarding dog droppings, and the owners are required to remove droppings immediately and properly dispose of them. If your council directs, we can make changes to these regulations, including not allowing horses on city streets. Or we could make changes to the regulations regarding the prohibition of horse droppings and the requirement of owners to immediately pick up those droppings. The problem with that, as I see it, is that it would be an enforcement issue and very tough to enforce, because typically, our police officers would not be following horses down the street as they go. I did include a copy of chapter six of the municipal code. I did include a copy of chapter six of the municipal code as the attachment. It's actually a fairly lengthy chapter. For horses, that is the extent of the discussion regarding horses. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them and provide some direction if that is the desire of your council.
Thank you. Community Development Director Caldwell. I will open it up to the City Council now for questions. I'll go to Councilmember Wilson, because I believe you brought it up to begin with.
Right. So, Kevin, you are, it is saying there that they, they're not allowed on sidewalks, if I'm reading that? Is that what you said?
Yes, that's my, well, I'm reading that provision.
Okay, because that was one of my big concerns, was that they would be, that they're on a sidewalk where there's people and they're, because they're, you know, they're a thousand-pound animal. So, that's good. The other part was the cleaning up of the fecal waste. I mean, it seems, I know that the police can't follow them up and down the street, but if they, if, if they see it, or it's kind of like if you, if you know it's wrong, I mean, that you should clean it up, I mean, it's. In this day and age, it just seems unbelievable that people would do that and expect the city to clean it up. Or somebody else, if it's in front of somebody's house, that the owner of the house would have to come out there and clean the mess up on their, in front of their house. So, how you, how you enforce it is one thing, but I would like to see something that at least makes a statement that says, "Don't do that. That's wrong." That's my personal opinion.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you. Should we just, instead of saying, "No owner shall permit a dog to deposit fecal matter," or should we just change it to "Any animal," like it reads in the previous part? And then maybe put it in the newsletter or something? Like what Frank says, just remind everybody, maybe? That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
Um, I think minder would be great, but I think the ordinance is adequate as written. It's saying no horses on sidewalks. Plus, I'm around on a lot, and I don't think I've seen many horses on sidewalks. I mean, when I do see them, they're in the street, and I, I just feel like it's adequate as written. That's it.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garne. Some forty-three years ago, when we moved to Ria Del, our daughter had acquired a horse in four H in Oregon, and she rode all over town. And, you know, rode on, on city streets. I don't, I don't remember ever her riding on sidewalks. And I would be totally against a prohibition of riding horses on city streets, but I think it's a good reminder to remind horse owners to clean up after their horse drops. Thank you, Mayor Garne.
Thank you. And I, I agree that the sidewalk issue is addressed, and I like the idea of putting in the newsletter, just a reminder. I think, sure, that enforcing would be kind of difficult. And the only thing I could think that you could do is insist on like a bag, you know, the under-the-tail bag. I think they make those. I don't know if you can assist on people buying those. So, anyway, but I think that definitely, since the sidewalk issue is covered, that a reminder would be the best way to go. And, and we also will have to recognize that you're not going to probably have a shovel with you either, and picking up, after your dog is quite a bit different than picking up after your horse. So, anyway, so I, I think this is the, is this the first reading? No?
No, no, no.
This is just a direction, you just need a direction. So, are there any hands raised or emails?
No hands raised at the moment.
And there's no emails.
Okay. So, I think the consensus seemed to be that the sidewalk issue was covered, and a reminder would be good. Is that the consensus? Is that, I don't need to take a vote on this, do I, City Manager?
Uh, no.
Okay. Is everyone satisfied, or does anyone need to say anything else? Okay, then, we will move on to the introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance Number three eight seven two zero two one, amending section two point six zero point zero three zero, parence four, of the Ria Del Municipal Code, changing the meeting time for the regular planning commission meetings. Page eighty-eight in the packet.
And I will, Mayor Garne, I apologize.
I was just going to say I will refer to Mr. Caldwell.
Right, Mayor Garne, members of the council. The planning commission met last month on the twenty-eighth, and from time to time, the commission discussed the possibility of changing the meeting time from six thirty to an earlier time. Due to work schedules, it never happened. One of our council members who had a hard time with that based on her work schedule recently retired, I'm sorry, one of our commissioners, and that was Commissioner Jackie Wilson. So, now she is amenable and supports actually shifting the meeting time from six thirty PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month to six PM. And the planning commission unanimously, unanimously supported that recommendation. As such, we're bringing it to your council to ask that council approve the planning commission's recommendation of changing that meeting time from six thirty to six PM. And this would be our introduction, the first reading of Ordinance Number three seven dash two zero two one, which would amend that section of the municipal code to change that meeting time. With that, I'd recommend your council open up a public hearing and then continue the item to the October nineteenth meeting for the second reading and adoption to amend that meeting time again from six thirty to sixteen. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Community Director. I will open it up for questions. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
No questions, Mayor Garne.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, and I have no questions. Are there any hands raised or emails?
Uh, no hands raised.
No emails.
Okay, having none, is there a motion to accept reading one, the introduction of Ordinance three eight seven two zero two one? And advance it forward to the meeting of October nineteenth for adoption?
So, moved by Johnson?
We have a motion? And a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garne?
Yes, motion carries five zero. Now, we will move on to council reports and communications. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garne. I will be out of town for the next meeting and also will probably miss the HCOG meeting later this month. And I may be totally out of, out of Zoom range, so just advance notification.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
Nothing to report, but I'd just like to ask Gordon, what, what's the date for the HCOG meeting?
It is the third Thursday, whatever date that is. Yeah, four o'clock, and they, they are meeting in, in person, masks required, City Council Chambers of Ria, of Eureka.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson? Oh, did you have anything else? Julie, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't have anything else, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Uh, nothing to really report for meetings, but it was in the, on the local media that the cash, TRB Redemption Center that was scheduled to open first of October has been delayed till the first of November because of, I assume it's the state regulations to, so they can do it, and they had to, whatever, so it's been put off. But there's, it appears there's going to be a place for you to redeem your cans at Arcata. So, that's a good thing.
All right. Thank you for that update. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you. I had a RDEC meeting on September twenty-seventh. We heard from the Director of Economic Development for the County of Humboldt. They are looking at doing a Samoa Peninsula Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District. It is a mouthful. It's just a proposal, but it sounds pretty interesting. So, the website for that is gohumbco dot com, and there's a link for Samoa Peninsula Enhanced Infrastructure Finance Districts. So, if anybody is interested in that, let me know. I also went to the Cal Cities Annual Conference last month, and it was a really great experience and highly inspiring and motivational, and I'm really happy I went. And I learned a bunch that I hope to bring back to the city, so I just wanted to say that that was really great, and I would like to go again.
Awesome. Yay, thank you. Thanks for going and representing. It's awesome. All right. And I am, I, one announcement is our first beautification, walkability, and pride committee meeting will be tomorrow evening, and it's going to be relatively short. It's going to be just basically getting to, introducing ourselves to each other and kind of getting a little, just a little bit of groundwork, and then hopefully, we'll be able to either watch the workshop about the Clean Energy, Clean California, or I'll send out a PowerPoint to everyone, and, and then we'll meet again and actually really go at the meat of the, the grant, so I'm excited about that. My year as President of the Redwood Empire Division for the Lead California Cities, or Cal Cities, rather, comes to an end on Thursday, and it's been really great. And I look forward to still, you know, working with them. And so, anyone wants to come to that meeting, it's going to be on Zoom, just let me know. It's basically just a installation of officers' meeting, so it'll be pretty quick. Anyway, so that's all I have, and I think I'm just waiting for someone to motion to adjourn.
So, moved by Johnson?
All right. We have a second, and so everyone have a great week, a great two weeks, and we'll see you October nineteenth. Thank you for anyone who attended. Thank you for coming. Good night, everyone. Meeting adjourned.